Okay, welcome everybody to our council meeting, November 2nd, 2021. Everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. Can we move forward with the motion on that, please? Moved by Council Padlo, seconded by Council Gerard. Be it resolved, Council of Town Nequa approved the regular meeting agenda for November 2nd, 2021. All in favor? Chair. Everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. If there's no errors or omissions, can we move forward with the motion on that? Moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Council Padlo. Be it resolved that the Council of Town Nequa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held October 19th, 2021 as circulated. All in favor? Chair. Okay, we're into council reports. Who has the council report? Uh, councillor.
Uh, I'm the head of the council.
Let's go ahead first.
Okay.
Uh, free public skating is on once again this season at the Yellowhead Community Rock Center. For anyone that's interested, it takes place Mondays from 5:45 PM till 6:30. And Sunday, there's slightly varying times. November 7th, it starts at 2 o'clock. Uh, Sunday, November 14th, starts at 3:15 PM. And from Sunday, November 21st onward, it starts at 3:30. Uh, for more information, if you go to yellowheadcenter.com, the information is right in that area. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council Parrott.
Hey, so we had the Farm and Leisure Lottery happen this weekend. Uh, indications are that it was slightly more successful than last year. And we do have winners. But I will allow the local paper to do that announcement. Uh, we met with the Water Services Board and Association, Associated Engineering to plan for our future water sources as well as dealing with our sewer. And we've had a big planning session this week to start looking at where we're going with our sewer water, uh, street resurfacing, uh, for our next year. And we've been having ongoing talks with long-range planning for where the whole town is going as expansion allows. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Anybody else? Okay. And just for on to management operations today.
Thank you, Mayor McCutcheon. Uh, as Council Parrott indicated, we did do some, some initial planning. Uh, lots of do just to ensure we have projects lined up for 2022 already. But also the acquisition of product too. So we want to make sure that we narrow down which streets we're going to bring forward to you guys. Uh, should we have a proper selection and that they fit within the budget constraints what we want to work with for, specifically the next year's budget already. But the big thing would be ordering product and making sure that we don't have to wait months upon months for something to arrive. So we'll probably do some pre-ordering pending budget approvals and what we have in remaining this year's budget too. So if it fits within this year's budget, we'll order. But otherwise, we'll look at ordering come January 1st. Um, I'd like to wish a congratulations to Courtney Walker-Nalges, uh, who achieved her Class 3 certification in water treatment. So it's a quite endeavor and she is busy working away now. So now she can fully and legally independently work at the water treatment plant. Um, you could have them do Class 2 license certification, uh, but Class 3, you get gratitude for use now. So that's fantastic for her. Uh, congrats school to Kevin, who has decided to switch from the park supervisor position over to a water supervisor trainee position. So he's got the long process of achieving his Class 3 license now, which could take up to four years, um, just based on the time constraints you have to perform the duties. Um, as people know, most of the street is ramping up. The water and sewer are completed. Storm sewer is initially in the now for servicing. We may do some amendments to that come spring, once we do some other work down the Brown Hill. And base work has been completed, so we did full excavation of meters worth of topsoil and sand. There wasn't much gravel there with the old street. And the geotext of that, now they're starting back the process. So contractors will continue working. We'll fill it up and get that to a passable stage and hopefully have that open to the public shortly. Uh, I'm relatively able to see on site. Uh, they believe to show up, they have started paving. So they've completed Stonehouse, Howden and Mill Street. And they're currently working in the residential area of Bray and Clare. Uh, those streets will be projected to be completed this week. And then they'll continue working around town. Uh, we don't foresee them finishing all of the paving we planned on them doing this year. Uh, so there are major patches in the main traffic zones. Um, and then they'll be back in the spring, once the temperature warms up. Because any overlay zones, they do need the tar coat to go on there. It's just too cold for that to bond. Street asphalting is okay, so we can, we can work with that. Uh, staff are just continuing to work with pickup. Right now, all fall work. And just tidying up all the final fall work. Winter sand and salt will be blended shortly. They'll get that trapped out. But we have material on the sites, we're locating the vet that it does cool off and get some rain twice in summer. Any questions?
Uh, you didn't mention Brown Avenue there. What have you decided there beside the Ken plus?
So Brown Avenue Hill, they will hopefully, with the pending, get that patch put in play and we'll get that hill opened up. Uh, through the intersection of Brown will be dug through with Davis and Street. That will remain gravelable and include that in next year's paving works.
Okay. So does that mean those patches that are on Mountain Level won't occur?
No, those, any of the main traffic zones, uh, they're disrupted. They have to get those patched first. So Brown, Hamilton, Mountain Avenue, any of the main collector traffic zones, I want those done. Then they have to find a way to get them done first.
And so, but this should also move this to the front of the list?
Yes.
For the first time in?
Yeah.
It's not giving you our time. It seems like, I mean, it seems like they can't finish you in the fall if you want to be first in the spring.
Yeah, so it is a good thought. I appreciate that. Is it? I asked for that, right? You actually come in to leave. And then it would be here in spring. They are looking for that easy initial start work where they can jump on some streets and do a kick. Um, likewise, we, we missed the vote on doing the approach at the Yellowhead, unfortunately, because we just could not obtain locate some time to finish excavation work called the curb work. And then the curb work, the curb crew left and could not come back, so.
I appreciate, I mean, you are also hampered by what MTS and Hydro, we are relying on them to do those locate works for us for those construction projects.
We're waiting months on some locates now.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Denise. All right, moving on to our EEO, Mountain Pool.
Thank you. So I want to give a quick report of a few things that have been in happening. So the 2021 What's the Big Idea event was successfully held at the Legion. Uh, in my report is, is the full list of all of the winners. But I wanted to make a few points. First of all, we gave away $9,150 to five businesses. And so as a rolling total, um, we, since 2015, we've helped 39 businesses with $57,800. So that's, um, something that we as a region should be very proud of, that support that we're giving to entrepreneurs. Um, I, as an update for the town prizes, neither of the town prizes were issued this year. So the industrial land that the town put up as a prize, there was no business eligible to receive that this year. So we'll put it back up again next year and see what happens. Unless, yeah, we'll, we'll see whether we want to change that back. Um, so I have sent around, um, a summary of the score fund improvement program. So first of all, I want to talk about 2021 program. To date, we have paid out, uh, $9,676.06. There is pending Comfort Electric still to be paid out. Um, so there still is a small balance of the $20,000 that was allocated for this year. So that's, that's the update right now. Um, and I did actually talk to, um, Westlake Employment Services about the potential of accessing some funding for their new location, but I haven't heard back from them. So it's possible that I could get another grant application this year. Another thing that we need to talk about, it seems like we just set up this program, but we did it three years ago as a pilot project with $50,000. So, um, part of my planning for next year is, um, a discussion here tonight about whether we want to continue with this program or if we think that maybe there's something different that could be done to support local business.
Any comments?
Thank you, Ger. You know, I was a big supporter of that program when it was introduced. Um, I, I look at projects, I look at a town investment of $33,700. And that can be leveraged into a $133,000 worth of work and improvements within our community. Uh, as in the government body, we don't usually get paying for our buck that's that straight along A to B. And I, I, I would continue to support a project like that. Our thing is how we can see it in ways expand if possible. Yeah, I would suggest the council probably, if you do, Council Gerard, yeah, I think it's been a very worthwhile program and it's been very successful. So, yeah, we'd be lucky maybe for, yeah, whatever you could break to the table. I don't know.
Okay. Then I will think about that and get back to you. Um, just a few other things. I did apply for a grant to cover 50% of the cost of a new standalone economic development website. So we'll see how that goes. Um, approvals aren't announced until January, so we'll have to wait. Um, I've been doing ongoing meetings with entrepreneurs, local businesses, developers and retailers, working with the chamber, trying to, um, figure out how we can do a parade with the, with, with the current public health orders. Um, for tourism, we received another place brand, support grant of $15,000 from Travel Manitoba. So tourism is, um, busy working on the mural project. And we're going to host a croco curl tournament this winter and a couple of other projects to, to continue to keep Nequa Tourism in the forefront. Um, we also hosted our first stay and play package. So we worked with Bay Hill Inn and Dairy Queen to create a special, um, incentive package for people when they were doing their, you know, stay at home, travel around Manitoba. And, um, we have eight rooms booked through that program in, in a two-month period, which, um, the, the hotel was happy, Dairy Queen was happy. So that is, it's a good start and we continue that program for, for now.
Okay. Perfect, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, we will move forward with, um, correspondent City Brandon, 911 agreement calling.
So this is an annual agreement we get from the city of Brandon every year. And just the highlights is, um, there's going to be an increase of 3%. So last year, we were paying $4.60 per capita. This year, it will be $4.74 per capita.
Okay. And the R C N D, right there.
Uh, this one is, uh, it's more from my desk. I have to fill out a form and send it back. But just to give you awareness of what this is about, and it relates to mandatory COVID vaccines, our vaccination, sorry. Uh, the government in Canada has recently announced mandatory vaccination requirements for all federal employees. All personnel who require access to R C P lease premises, including landlord personnel groups, so for example, employees, contractors and subcontractors must be fully vaccinated. R C P workplaces include all places of work under the responsibility of the R C P within Canada where federal government employees are or could be present. So what this means for us is because that is a lease building, putting a partiality to the province and to the R C P members, uh, our cleaners, we have to make sure that they're cleared and vaccinated, so that's a tough one for somebody. And for example, even if our employees have to go over there and change a light bulb or whatever, we, we have to make sure that, uh, we're following rules or should they require electrician or anything in particular, um, we have to sign an association that we actually are going to follow their rules and make sure that we're abiding with what federal government is asking us. All we do in that are our behalf.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to finance, accounts for October 2021. Everybody's had a chance to review. Any questions? If not, kind of move forward with a motion. Moved by Council Coste, seconded by Council Gerard. Be it resolved and we approve the accounts for October 2021 totaling $2,329,821.64 as reviewed in representing check 202101733 to 202101974, but excluding 202101864 and 202101865. All in favor? Chair. Council Gerard, if you may, excuse yourselves for conflict. We're going to move forward with those accounts for Home Hardware and Quoq. If there's no questions, otherwise, can I get a resolution? Moved by Councillor Parrott, seconded by Council Padlo. Be it resolved and we approve checks 202101864 and 202101865 for October 2021 to Home Hardware and Nequa Glassstone Quoq totaling $5,089.25. All in favor? Chair. Okay, moving into new business, snow removal agreements calling.
So this is an annual resolution we normally do. A few years ago, uh, we actually, uh, when we were having trouble with our snow clearing services and Kotex were no longer there, we split it down into two quads. And we decided to offer two local contractors to do half of the town each. The positive approach to doing that, should one contractor not be able to do their side, we, we have a backup plan rather than have streets called a pub. So every year, we do a resolution to accept them for the year. The only difference this year is we were accepting them through the winter season per se. We decided to amend the agreements and actually, so right now, uh, they're still under contract until the end of the year. So we're actually accepting for the full year of 2022, which would cover whole spring session of snow clearing and then of course, the fall of 2022. So we'll be back at this again, clearly next November for the new ones. So there's a few amendments in there, a few of the graders and trunks have gone to 10 or five or whatever. It was fairly minimal, really reflecting markets.
Any questions, any comments?
Is there a fuel surcharge?
Uh, I'd have to ask Denise if there's anything. I don't think so.
I don't recall fuel surcharge.
I think just the raise of salary.
No, I think it's good. The council body's been very happy with, uh, keeping it local and they've been doing a great job, so. Okay, we'll move forward, I guess, with, uh, getting a motion on both of them separately. So moved by Deputy Mayor Headley, seconded by Council Gerard. Be it resolved, the Council of Town Nequa approved the deal contracts with P Baker Backhoe Service and, oh, and Ross Smith Backhoe and Truck Enervate. We remove the snow within the Town of Nequa when required during a period of January 1st, December 32, December 31st, 2022. All in favor? Chair. Okay, the Nequa's funding approval. We're talking about a water slide. Who's going to speak to that? Councilor DeDoe, over the head.
Oh, we need to cue up the screen, eh? Can we put the screen down?
Oh, yeah, we were going to do a picture of the slide. Can we? Or do we not? I don't know.
Well, I took your laptop over to the, your.
We can just take a picture when we can.
Because you've got, there's all. It's on there.
So, uh, last week, last Wednesday, the, the Red Committee, the Recreation and Economic Development Committee met, Councilor Padlo and myself were on there. And, uh, it was probably one of the best meetings we've ever had because we had the privilege and the honor of selecting which slide that the Town of Nequa will be purchasing for our new pool. And, uh, thank you, Councilor Padlo. Councilor Padlo here is, uh, is going to show you what it looks like. Uh, we got a nice visual to show people at home. And, uh, those of you here at the meeting, uh, it is, it's new.
Sorry to interrupt, but we're having a technological glitch here.
We'll show you on the screen also.
Yeah. We really do know how to do our dogs. This will be the wild factor.
Yeah. It's worth the wait. It's worth the wait. Okay, so thank you, Councilor Padlo. So as you can see, uh, we're looking at model number 1823. And it has a 360 degree, 360 degree curve and a 270 reverse curve. And, uh, we feel that this, this is the slide for Nequa. And we had to look through a few different options and we were looking at the pros and cons. And this is going to give us the most functionality at our, at our pool. The other, the other slides that we were looking at had different entry points that were opposite of the exits and that would cause some, some grief with people interacting with each other and coming and going. So there was a lot of factors as to why we chose this one. Uh, it also is tall and it's something that we feel that patrons that are using the slide are going to want to continue using it. It won't just be, uh, you know, something that gets boring for students, for children. So, so definitely, uh, this is a slide we're bringing back to council to hopefully approve tonight. And, uh, the color we selected, Council Padlo?
Well, we've gone with the red, uh, slide. That was the one that was most discussed and I think will probably be the most vibrant for that area. So it's very exciting.
Red.
The red slide part, yes.
The slide part is red?
The red stairs?
Uh, the stairs, we went.
White powder.
White.
White, right.
Great dress.
So would we, sweet, good. When would be, when would be the, uh, install? Would we see interruption at the pool if that were to be, when that was purchased? Just curious. I'm, that's just, that's just me having devilry details on days.
Good question. Actually, that leads us in the right direction, so thank you. Actually, uh, we don't want to interrupt our, our swimming program that occurs. So they're looking at doing some of the work before swimming starts and then finish it after swimming ends. And that means it would officially open, uh, the summer of 2023.
I think it's pulled on one more slide. So for the sake of the last diagram, it shows a spiral staircase. We're not going with a spiral staircase. It will be a full stair run, everyone parallel with the, of the runoff chute. So the other diagram also showed the slide dropping into the pool. We're not going to do that. The slide will be independent and drop into its own runoff trough.
And they feel that our existing pump systems and pool systems can handle all fires? We're not tying into that in any weight, shape or form?
All indications is the existing pumping system we have can handle this.
Awesome. No, it sounds good. Thank you, Council Padlo. You're on.
So hopefully it takes everybody's minds off the board for the next, the next month.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we move forward with the purchase of my butterfly?
I'll make you a stat. Um, all the slides, when you look at them, there's probably everybody's wondering, what are the costs of these things? Uh, the slides that ran anywhere from, uh, 210, 215 up to this particular one was 236,000. So, uh, looking at the more simpler slides, many stuff to pay 210, 215, 220. Um, this was a no-brainer to add a few extra thousand in it and, and get something that's going to be fairly decent.
So I believe that was a consideration because when the regional rec report was written three years ago, one of the things that they identified was a pool. You're looking at ways to identify, maybe, maybe solving the, the long-term deficit problem at the pool is to increase the length of swim. And that is probably a wrong way somebody, or you're thinking of it as a bigger picture.
And I think, um, can you maybe speak to it? When they were given, and the pool was given slide options, there is, uh, you know, some possibilities for younger children type, uh, slides that we could also add into, you know, we'll work on one and see where we get.
Okay. You're good, Council DeDoe?
Yeah, I feel like Chester Cheater.
Yeah, no, you're retired. You and Council Padlo both were retired to make this, to make this happen. So thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward with that realizing resolution. Moved by Council DeDoe, seconded by Council Padlo. Be it resolved and we approve the purchase of the fiberglass water slide model 1823 from the Commercial Pool and Recreational Products in amount of $236,470.64 plus tax. All in favor? Chair. Okay, calling a sale of property at CN.
So this is the very last vacant lot on the, um, on the, basically the duplex side. And we're asking for your approval to sell it. And we'll have all the residential sections sold.
Hmm, excellent. Any questions or comments? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Moved by Council Coste, seconded by Council Padlo. Be it resolved and we approve the sale of lot 4, 5 and 6, 5, 6 feet and southwest 33-14-15W in the amount of $45,000 to 11, uh, 11520, 130, Canada Corporation, Wilmar Lopez and Rolando Duly, subject to the terms of the purchase and sale agreement. All in favor? Okay, calling the water supply side.
Uh, so this was added to your plan late in the day and only because of our meeting that we had at 1:00 today with Mental Water Services Board and, uh, our engineers, Associated Engineering. We have Ken Anderson, he does ready pass trend up here. Uh, so we had quite a lengthy discussion with them about our future in relation to making sure we have, um, the correct water supply that we need, not just for now, going into the future. Uh, we talked to them about our Loom project as well. So all the projects we either have currently in the queue, uh, projects we'd like to have in the queue for 2022 planning and stuff, this one we're all range in relation to, you know, trying to accommodate growth, whether it be another way industry, the current one we have, or any other growth type of source. Uh, so based on that, we, we also have a mandate under the Office of the Drinking Water. When they did their last licensing issue for our water plant, they said to us that by the year 2025, we had to have another water model study done. So sitting with, uh, Water Services Board today, they agreed they could find some money in their budget. So, um, they actually meet, I think it's on the 18th of November, and they want to be able to start building their agenda towards that. So they said they would be prepared to assist us technically and financially to get a water supply study completed and start working on getting those statistical data, information all gathered up to understand what do we have now? Do we have the capacity and meet our need now? Um, do we need more upgrades to the plant, for example? So, you know, as much as we bring water in, we need to be able to treat it. Uh, we are adding a reservoir, so that's, that's a help. But we also know that we, under a planning, uh, resolution we were recently having passed for our capital projects for Water Services Board, we're looking at adding a third well site, not just a well, but a site, so that should over on our Hummer, it need to be taken offline for a maintenance issue or something, we would have another site. And that doesn't mean for the people watching that we're drawing more water from the aqua. That's not what it means at all at this point. It just means the ability to, um, bring that water in. So right now, if, uh, over on that down, Hummer's going to supply the liters of capacity that we have. So if we want to bring in, for example, 57 liters into the plant to treat it, uh, Hummer's going to give us 47. So this third well site will give us the ability to manage our system better and figure out where we're going. So we're asking for your support and asking for a resolution down to Water Services Board to work on a water supply site.
Any questions, any comments?
Comment. The drought that we had this year has showed the effects of, of not looking long range to our water supply. If it doesn't rain, we don't get. And if it doesn't rain, we don't get groundwater, we don't get groundwater, we don't have well water or lake water, anything like that. Currently, uh, city or town of Morden, or whatever you want to call it, Morden, is in, um, water rationing because their water supply is, what is it, eight months? They have an eight month, eight month water supply. If there's a low snow winter, they're in drastic, uh, circumstances. We have a lot happening here in Nebo, we know we're expanding, we know we have a lot more coming. Highlight is, uh, doing very well and probably will expand even more. So we have to plan for our future now so that when it happens, we're already there, not scrambling at the time. Because these kind of things take years, not weeks to get done. So, good idea.
Thank you, Mary, anybody else? Okay, we'll move forward with that motion, moved by Council Parrott, seconded by Council Jarrett. Be resolved if the council of Town Nebo requests technical and financial assistance from the Mental Water Services Board to proceed with the water supply study. All in favor? Here. Okay, we're down to business. Anybody have anything else they want to discuss tonight?
I'd like to give out, uh, okay, to, uh, Mary Ellen Clark and her crew, who had to step up to the plate quite a bit more, there was a lot of, I'm just going to name John Nelson and Jerry Nelson, I know. They were directly involved in a lot of recent, and also Murray Van Buster. Um, I can't remember the number he sold this year, but he's been a huge ticket seller for, uh, the lottery. And without these people, we would not have our clinic. That's, that's a bottom line. And the clinic recruitment, is this a recruitment meeting? Is this a reflection on the cooperation of all the surrounding areas and the people that live here to make that place viable and stable? And it has long-range implications into everything else we do in Nebo.
And you are ready. Okay, thank you, Mary, anybody else? Okay, we will move forward with the German, moved by Council Padlo, seconded by Councilor Costin. Be resolved that the council of Town Nebo do not adjourn this later P M. Council at 7:35 P M. All in favor? Here.